Okay, guys. Good afternoon. Welcome to our regular City of Fairhope City Council work session. Today is Monday, August the 12th. We're starting a little bit behind, forgive us. First on the agenda is Baldwin Family Village update.
Good evening. I'm Kate Carver and I'm the Executive Director of the Dumas Wesley Community Center and we have the Baldwin Family Village under our umbrella as one of our 12 programs that we run. I did have a video, whoever's the tech person here, that I shared. Is that something that we can share?
Yes.
All right. This is just an update on our anniversary.
Well, Baldwin County's first and only homeless shelter for women and children marked its first year of operation. Organizers say they're sending dozens of families back into the community with a sense of stability.
Chad Petrie is following that story. He's in the studio with us this morning with more on how you can help. Good morning, Chad.
Morning, Shmani. Good morning, Bill. Officials with the Dumas Wesley Center say at this point they've helped at least 81 women and children through their new Baldwin County facility. The Baldwin County Family Village opened in the spring of 2023 and hit capacity for the first time late last year. Now they're watching dozens of women graduate their program. One of them I spoke with was Brittany Stapleton. She's originally from Mobile County and moved back to the area after leaving what she describes as a domestic abuse situation. After 10 months at the Baldwin County Village, she has a new rental home and is back in school. Stapleton says the program gave her stability and held her to standards that she had to meet.
Everybody there was just on our side and they were giving us good advice on how to handle our situations and, you know, they would give us like good things to look forward to, goals.
We are so proud of the Baldwin County community for wrapping their arms around our mission and our residents and welcoming us into their community.
The Baldwin Family Village offers support to women who may be fleeing domestic violence, housing instability, or a sudden loss. They have case management, life skill classes, and behavior modification, and they rely on community support, whether it's through donations of time, volunteering, or money. For more information, you can find this story on the front page of our website at W K R G dot com. Chad Petrie, W K R G News 5.
So the purposes of our visit this afternoon is to share where we are one year, a little bit over a year later. So since we have shared that information at our one-year anniversary, I'm going to give you some current updates about how important this asset is in our community. Just in case you weren't aware, as of last year, there were 254 children identified as homeless according to the Baldwin County Public School System. Ninety-five homeless women and children have been served to date since the Baldwin Family Village opened in May of 2023. Fifty-six homeless women and children have successfully graduated into independent housing. Twenty-one Baldwin Family Village children are attending Fairhope Schools currently. Twelve Baldwin Family Village residents are employed here in Fairhope. Two Baldwin Family Village residents are pursuing higher education opportunities in Fairhope. And one Baldwin Family Village just recently moved into permanent housing in Fairhope. And as of this morning, we have 71 women and children on our waiting list at the Baldwin Family Village. So I wanted to just take the opportunity to give you guys this update, share our successes, and hope you guys agree that this is an important asset in our community worth supporting. I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Yeah, sure. Thank y'all for coming and sharing the beautiful things that you have been allowed to do to help people in our community. We stand on that here. The 71 that you have on the waiting list, is there a plan to be able to not have people at a particular number on the waitlist to move forward and grow bigger? Is that something y'all talked about?
It's funny, I've got my colleagues behind me with the Baldwin Family Village Foundation and we laughed this morning about the possibility of applying for Impact 100 funding to expand our programming.
Amen.
I'm not opposed. I'm a little bit nervous about the prospect of growing when we've just been open for one year, but there's clearly a need.
Yes.
And we do have, I will say, some adjoining property that is right now being used as storage and we've toyed with the idea of renovating it to offer more space. But right now, it's the only program of its kind that is, provides long-term housing. There are, as you guys know, there's places like Family Promise and other temporary shelters, but those are 30 or 60 days. Families that come into our care can stay for one year. And we have the blueprint that shows that we have a pretty great success rate across the Bay with a similar program. And we're just honored that this community has, you know, stepped up to support this program.
Yes.
And there's also, I think everybody has a copy of the Save the Date. I hope you guys will consider coming to this upcoming gathering for goodness. It's just, part of it is just an awareness informational meeting, but also to just let people know that this community needs their continued support. You guys have been great in our first couple of years of operating, but we need continued support in all forms, not just financial, to keep this program up and running. But I'm happy to answer any other questions if there are any.
Counsel, any other questions?
I think congratulations.
Absolutely.
For your first anniversary and it's awesome. Sure good to hear.
Thank you.
Thanks for all of your work.
Yeah. Really need it. God bless you guys.
We'll go with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is a discussion of proposed sick leave donation policy. I think Ms. Hannah is going to take care of that.
Good afternoon. So we, the mayor and I, had some discussions at one point in time about whether or not we would want to allow employees to donate sick time to one another. Tabled it for a time and decided to bring it back, open it up for discussion first and foremost. One of our primary concerns was just making sure that there were some guidelines for both the recipient employee and a donor employee. The primary concern was making sure that this was something that was available to an employee who truly has a need, meaning they are, either have not earned enough sick time because they have not been here very long, or due to the nature of their medical leave or their caregiver leave, they have exhausted all of their accrued sick time, their accrued vacation time, comp time, all of that. So we put together a proposed addition to the handbook. I'm not sure if y'all have the clean version or the marked up version, but essentially the whole section is new to the employee handbook. If you'd like, I'd be happy to review some of the provisions or if y'all have questions, I can answer those as well.
So, yes, let's review some of the things we changed. What did we change particularly? I think we have it in order.
So, first and foremost, there was a sentence that said that the city would not allow sick leave donations, so that's obviously been crossed out. As far as the policy itself that's been added, one provision is that the employee has to have completed at least one full year of continuous service. They're eligible for or currently on a qualifying medical leave or caregiver leave. Also that they have a current or recently anticipated immediate need, meaning they can't be planning for a surgery that's six months out and thinking they may or may not need it, they have to need it now. Additionally, making sure that we set provisions, meaning an employee can donate to another employee, a supervisor can donate to a subordinate, but an employee cannot donate to one of their immediate supervisors. Also that if the employee is eligible for the short-term disability income, which is paid for by the city, that they would only be eligible for the donation during the 15-day qualifying period. After that, we would require them to start participating in that short-term disability benefit. Additionally, if the employee has any attendance issues that they've been counseled for, disciplined for, you know, we want to make sure that employees are using the sick time that we're giving them appropriately. Also, if the employee submitted their resignation or even their retirement notice, they wouldn't be able to donate to an employee. Because as y'all know, that's something that can be converted towards their service credit or be cashed out depending on their qualifications. We've also set some limits, so an employee cannot donate more than 480 hours in a lifetime, so that would be their employment period. And the donor employee has to maintain a balance in their sick bank. So we don't want another employee exhausting themselves to take care of another employee. You know, we've got to make sure they take care of themselves as well. Also that the recipient employee could not receive more hours than what they need. So if they only need 80 hours, they're not going to get 160 hours. Let's see what else. We've got some provisions, including human resources and department head sign-off, since that would include time away from work or the potential for another employee to lose some saved up time. Also that it won't be made retroactively, but we could credit it forward to future pay periods depending on how the leave progresses.
So Hannah, are we seeing this as a value to our system? Are we seeing these problems a little bit? Not being able to help people?
I haven't been here long enough to say that I've seen the problems.
In the past?
But in the past, we have, in the past, I have. And it is a huge benefit. We have a lot of employees who are very generous and really want to take care of their coworkers, and this is a great way for them to do that. Especially if they can't maybe do it, you know, monetarily, they can give them a couple hours of sick time and it, you know, kind of gives them a little bit of peace as well.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Counsel, y'all have any questions about this?
The example showed the equivalency of someone with different wages.
Yes.
And accounting for that. That was a question I had. That was several examples. As I see, you said they can't receive more than they actually need. I guess if a manager, mayor, or somebody would oversee that.
That's right, yes.
To make sure that's not abused.
Yes.
I will say that we had this policy in place probably 10 years ago, and we removed it from the handbook at that time. We thought there was some abuse, and so when we started looking at the handbook revisions, we didn't submit it with the original handbook because there were still some loopholes in it. So I asked Hannah to research kind of other policies that she had, you know, previously been exposed to and just to see where we could tighten some of that up. So that's what we've done. I think it's a good policy. I do think, like Hannah said, it's nice for employees or coworkers to be able to help each other, and this is one way they can do that. And we do, you know, we do at times have employees who could benefit from this. So I think it's a nice thing to be able to offer, and again, I feel like we've tightened it up enough where it won't be abused.
Very good. Very good. Yep. Yep, I think it's a good policy. Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you.
Unless you have anything else. All right, guys. Agenda item number three is AMI meter policy, the electric department. I don't know, Ben? Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
So, brought David Garrett with me. He's AMI coordinator. We need to discuss maybe having a policy for these new infrastructure, for the AMI, for the meters we're putting in, which eventually will go with gas and water also. So I'm going to turn it over to David.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. Yes, you have before you kind of our formal policy. We've never had one before in writing. It was always just kind of understood that if you have service, then you have the meter. And we value the meter. We consider it an essential part of our infrastructure. Just a little background, currently, our old system is, it's called AMR, Automatic Meter Reading. You've probably seen a truck driving down the street, collecting meter readings. You do that every month. The new system, AMI, Advanced Metering Infrastructure. So instead of having to have the truck roll down the street, the meters send the data to a base station, and that, in turn, we upload that to our computer system and into our billing when it's time to bill. We can also get alerts on the new meters, such as power failures, which, as we develop our outage management system, we'll be able to see the extent of the power outage, which customers are affected, and where the fault lies. So the technician knows exactly to go to this pole, this transformer, right? And will know 20 customers are out, 100 customers are out. So we'll know when they're restored as well. We'll get those alerts as well. I feel like it's important to note that the meter, AMR or AMI, neither one of them contain customer data. That is strictly housed in the billing system. So for privacy concerns, the meter does not have any customer data whatsoever. We've also published some information on the website for people to look at. It's kind of a frequently asked questions format. Why we're doing it, explain the meters and the whole process that we're going through. So, any questions? I'd be happy to try to answer.
Doesn't he have any personal customer data, but as a city as a whole, it'll tell us when we're using power at peak times and, you know, if we're hitting it at 6:00 PM or 7:00 AM and give us data like that, right?
Right, it will. And we have SCADA as well, that we can see that, that data also. But yes, we can download reports, we can get alerts on those peak issues as well. Yes, sir.
Let me step in for a minute, because a lot has been paid for by funds that are being withheld on our account, on our behalf by AMEA, the borrowers through the, through AMEA.
Buying power.
And, you know, and AMEA is always working towards ways to reduce our energy costs. So if they need a certain amount of data to run their power plant at a certain time of the day, if we can convince people to charge their electric vehicle at 2:00 in the morning instead of 4:00 PM in the afternoon, or 5:00 PM when the air conditioners are running wide open, it reduces our overall cost of power because we get charged based on our peak usage, our average peak usage. It's a complicated formula, but it comes down to about one hour a year. It'll say, all right, this is what we're basing your rates on next year. But it helps us to inform our users if you can help us in any way. It's kind of like watering your yard, you know? We don't want people watering your yard at the same time, you know? It's like, you know, we want you to spread it out a little bit, right? So same thing with power.
Yep.
Can you, can you mention, can you let everybody know kind of where we are on AMI?
Absolutely. So there has been a struggle with meters, and it's not just us, it's industry-wide. We are told that we should receive the bulk of our residential 2S meters by the end of this quarter. So once we get that in, we will begin full implementation. We've installed about 600 total. We did Quell Creek and we did a few other neighborhoods, and then we did kind of the reach of the corner, four corners of our electric footprint, if you will, testing the range of the base stations, making sure everything was good there. And we have, Census and Munis have worked together, making sure that everything integrates into the billing system so that we have no issues there as well.
So these meters are going to coordinate with the SCADA system? They'll be on?
Well, it'll be more with a outage management system, which we don't, we're in the process of, we want to implement that as well. But it will talk to that. And that's where you'll see on the map, kind of like Riviera has their outage map. I don't know if you've ever seen that, but you will be able to see on the map who is out, where the fault is, and the technician, lineman will get that. They'll know to go to pole 123, and that's the transformer they need to look at.
With GPS, right.
Right, yes.
So this will decrease the guys walking around, having to read the meters, or no?
Right. So yes, we won't have a truck rolling around up and down the street every month. Right, exactly.
And people looking for problems when we have problems?
Right, we'll be able to, we'll get those, right. We will no longer be relying on someone to call us to tell us their power's out.
You already know.
We'll get that automatically. And in fact, the customer can actually sign up to get a text alert, your power is out, we're aware, you know?
Right.
Lineman, technician's on the way, correct?
And that's, that's pretty cool.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm excited about that, for sure, yes.
Very good, yeah. I just want the public to know, so we're going to tell all the things that they're getting with this, not just somebody invading their property line.
Exactly, yes.
Yes.
There's a huge benefit to both. I mean, obviously to us and the customer as well, yes, sir.
Right, very good, David. Thank you.
All right.
Any questions, Counsel? Any other questions about this? Anything? Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That's Ms. Kim. I think I got all my big paper here.
Good evening. So y'all should have packets. We're going to, we're going to tonight discuss general fund revenues, and we've had some meetings, and so some of y'all have already seen this. I've had it tweaked a little bit, and then we're going to talk about sanitation, since general fund does support sanitation, and then we'll also go through some proposed projects that's general fund supported. Today, I did receive from Teddy Faust, the revenue commissioner, our abstract for the year, for this coming year, and so I went ahead and booked that number. So the number he gave me was $10,358, and I booked here on this proposed is 96% of that number, so discounting 4% as possibly could come in or not come in. But that's, that's been a good factor for us to use the past several years that I've been here to make sure that we're not over budgeting on our revenue. So you will see that a change from when we discussed in some of our meetings. Do you have any questions on that one?
No, ma'am.
So if you want, we can go through some of the numbers. I clarified, I knew in a couple of meetings it was just kind of questioned what the annual increase. I really broke that down when you start looking at like the city sales tights on that description. I put in, you know, so that you can see it's a 3% annual increase. That's really just kind of the estimate that I'm using, but I'm having to base it on the actuals for '23, but really that's what it's coming down to is the, is an annual increase. So those are, I just want to be able to highlight some of the big numbers, which is, you know, our city sales tights being a 3% annual. The simplified seller's use tights, which is known for the Amazon tights, is to give a projected 5% annual increase. And in your packet, on the very last, you have your sales tights as of July, so you can really start seeing how our annual numbers are coming in, where our current through July, where for sales tights, and that includes used tights, inside the city limits, outside of the city limits, it's all combined in this one report. So we're running at 4% annually, so you can see where I budgeted 3% for those. But the simplified seller's use tights currently is running at 14% increase, so my projection of 5% increase. Another one that we, you know, want to hit is on lodging tights. Our lodging tights currently is right, is at 2%, and I'm budgeting a 1% increase. I did find out on Friday that for lodging tights, there is a new law that is, should go into place January of '25, that's going to be any, that is, is like a facilitator transactions, and we're talking Airbnb, they're going to be required now to pay and to collect and remit, and so that's a new law that's going to come in in January of '25. So we should start seeing some sales tax or lodging tax increase due to that law. I don't, you know, I've just got a little bit of information, and I did give a copy of that act to the mayor, but I will send that to y'all also, so you can be able to see that could increase our lodging tax, being able to have those facilitators pay Nets, those are some of the larger, larger ones. Our building permits, I, you know, I'm just trying to be conservative and speaking with Eric, we think this is a good number by just staying at the $900,000, where we are, it's a little less than what we budgeted last year. Do you have any questions on any of this? I know it's a lot of numbers.
Yep. All right.
You're going to go back. You mentioned sanitation. Are we going to talk about that in particular?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. That's next.
Go ahead, sanitation.
Great. Okay, sanitation. I did a graph for y'all to see you can see where our revenue is in sanitation and to look at when we raise rates. You can see where in '21, we increased our rates to $20 for residential and '25 for commercial or non-resident. And then we changed our resolution in October of '22 to have the language, it was per can, per cart. And you can, you can see where it, you know, it increased some revenue by doing it, by having it per cart. But now we're, now we're at another standstill that we, our rates are not, the revenue is not covering our expense. And, you know, don't know if we should have had an escalation there to be able to have, you know, where knowing costs are going up and our rates were staying flat. Our customer, you know, you would, you would pick up additional customers and, you know, expect the additional customers, but it's still not keeping up with our cost.
That's where I was, my question was going to be, it doesn't seem like we're picking up that many new customers if I look at these, if I look at 2023 to 2024, you'd almost think the growth of Fairhope is completely flat, and that's not true. So I don't.
I don't understand.
Quite understand these curves don't look like.
They don't, or what I thought they would look like.
Yeah, and it would be that there, we're picking up those customers inside the city limits, and if our city limits, I mean, we're having revenue growth in which that's revenue that's going to Walmart, Publix, but these customer accounts. Right now, our number of carts is just shy over 12,000 carts.
12,000?
Cans that we bill, that we're billing currently right now.
That we're billing?
Currently, right now, what we're billing.
12,000?
12,000.
It just seems like, I was, Jack, it seems like from '21 to '24, we hadn't increased at all.
12,000.
That's one can per home?
Let me tell you what this math tells you. If you look at 2023 to 2024, pick any one of those, pick a $5,000 per month increase, right? All right, that's divided by, what, $20 a month?
That's four.
250, that's 250 cans, roughly, is the growth. That is per month.
Per month?
According to.
No, not per month, just that'd be for the whole year.
For a year, that's an annual growth.
According to sanitation, we're averaging work week delivering a can a day. So that may be about right.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Is it equipment?
And I think too, what y'all are seeing, like Kim was saying, the growth, I mean, a lot of the growth that we're seeing is not in city limits.
So it's not happening.
It's, right, but they are saying, again, during the work week, just in our city limits, they are delivering a can a day, so.
Right, dead on, one a month, I mean, one a week, a day.
It is, it is, 250.
Five weeks. How are we doing on collecting on the, you know, the people that, you know, we had a problem where we had some customers that had four, five, six garbage cans, and they're paying for one service.
And that's one thing that I think you'll see too in the budget, you know, third eye, y'all approved that several meetings ago, that's the camera system. We think that's going to help catch some of those folks who are putting out multiple cans that are not city cans. We also think that we've asked for an additional person in sanitation, to be able to have that person that will go out and kind of verify some of that, to also be able to go out and we'll be an extra person on the route to help with, to kind of be the eyes and ears of the department, fill in when the driver's not there, make sure we're having consistency in our routes. The only thing I will tell you is sanitation, is we have increased pay in sanitation, just like we have across the city. Some of the, you know, positions like sanitation hoppers that we've had, you know, added, we've also increased that pay for entry level, so I think that's, you know, factoring into our cost as well.
And then just to defend you on that, Mayor, we also had, you know, the highest inflation over the past three, four years than we've had in probably the previous 10 or 15. And, you know, right after we did that, we increased, we just, that was just catching up from the previous.
That's right.
Ten years, and then immediately inflation went to 6%, 8%, 9% again.
Right, and where we were paying sanitation hoppers, you know, $12, $13 an hour, now we're paying them $16, $17 an hour. And you have to do that for those entry level positions to be able to keep them. You need them for public health and safety. But unfortunately, we're competing with other businesses that are paying that for entry level positions as well. So, you know, benefits are one thing, but people also just need the dollar in their paycheck. So we've had to be competitive with pay as well.
So Kim, we're working with some numbers to see what it looks like, playing with anything, to see what we need to do to balance that.
Yes, you know, looking at a $2 can, $2 per can, that's $288,000 per year increase, that still doesn't fit's our hole. It helps. $3 is $4.32, $4 is $5.76. George did call around to some other areas today just to try to get, find, trying to find somebody that has twice a week pickup. The county currently charges $34 a month for twice a week pickup for Uno Island, and Fort Morgan Road has sections. So it's trying to kind of look at like, we know we're behind, and I can, you can see it in the numbers. You can see your second page where I'm showing a million dollars right now transfer from general fund, and, and we still have a. George did call around to some other areas today just to try to get, find, trying to find somebody that has twice a week pickup. The county currently charges $34 a month for twice a week pickup for Uno Island. And Fort Morgan Road has sections. So it's trying to kind of look at like, we know we're behind and I can, you can see it in the numbers. You can see your second page where I'm showing a million dollars right now transfer from general fund. And, and we still have a hole of almost $900,000. So it's trying to find out where the right balance is. I think where we're seeing some of these other municipalities that's north, like Hoover, I forgot. Yeah.
Relax.
So the majority of the places around the Birmingham area, you hear about Mountain Brook and you hear about Hoover, Pelham Mall doing possible twice a week garbage up there. When you call, they're actually using a waste management company, Am South. And it's not actually the same, it's not what is advertised. They advertise that they're picking up twice a week, but what it is, is they're doing household waste that's going to a landfill in the first half of the week. And the second pickup is actually going to a recycle center that is breaking down the waste and taking the stuff that they can to go to a fuel place to, to refine it to make fuel. So they're, they're really doing recycling one day and garbage.
So we really actually have three pickups a week, we don't have two.
We do, we actually have, we actually have four because we do yard, yard debris as well.
That's true.
Four, yeah.
Yeah, I just think of yard debris as sanitation.
Most of the other companies that I talked to today, they do a once a quarter pickup on yard waste. They do once a week on household garbage. And most of them are drop off only on recycling. So.
Yeah.
Alabaster is one of the cities that I talked to that's set up just like us. They, they do all their own pickup, they do their own, all their own trucking, just like we do. And they do once a week garbage, recycle drop off only, once a quarter trash, and they charge $18 a month for that.
Let me ask, so let's play devil's advocate. Say we did, I'm not saying we're doing this, so let me just say we did the one pickup, okay? Could a constituent call for pickup if they throw a party or if they, they, would they have access?
You would come up with a set fee for that.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah. Okay.
And I'm not, I'm not advocating either way.
No, we're not, I'm just talking.
Politic for one way or the other, I'm just saying that.
I understand, I'm just.
If you compare the rates, they're doing once a week with nothing that we do and they pay 18. And we do everything with white glove service for 20.
Right, yeah, I'm just thinking of, yeah.
Yeah, Council President, may I?
Yeah, hold on one second.
About three or four years ago, we got into a discussion on once a week pickup. And I really don't know, you know, where it went, to be honest with you.
I think nobody liked it.
I don't know if we had a bunch of blowback from it or what the deal was. And I remember I made the point that, you know, just me and my wife, we could fill up a can in a week.
Yeah.
But that's not to say the other families.
Right.
I think I made the point that my brew fills up seven trash cans a week.
In two days, as opposed to, I don't, you know, I really don't know what the.
That is something, that is something that Alabaster had a kind of a way to make up for that. Is since they went to once a week garbage, they offered that you can purchase a second can, to have a second can to where if you do have a household that produces more garbage, you just pay for an extra can.
There you go.
They pick up both cans at the same time.
Yeah, just the one pickup though, yeah, with both cans. And so those are the kind of things I was trying to talk out to see was there some evidence of something like that working?
And one of the things that, once again, I'm not trying to advocate one way or the other, as we all have made a decision, but we also are having the Ballin County Recycling Murph that's hopefully kicking off in November. And we're going to hopefully start working towards providing a recycle can for the residents, a full size, same thing as the garbage can right now, 96 gallon. And the idea is eventually get to where auto trucks are picking up the recycling the same way as the garbage is picked up. So theoretically, you could say we are providing two cans and we're trying to hope that people are going to recycle more to reduce the garbage load. So then you will be splitting the load.
Right. Okay.
But some of those other rates that we, that we were seeing is 25 to 30 dollars per, per month.
So in Pelham and in Hoover, they do a twice a week garbage pickup and it's, it's right at just under 26 dollars a month that it is for residential.
But people are paying for the, the cost of labor, I mean, they're actually, yeah, okay, because of prices, so.
Council President.
Yes, sir.
Really, so you actually hit the nail on the head of a thing. One of the things I was going to say about recycling, if people recycle more, your household garbage will go down. It'll just be basically two cans, two big cans a week. But secondly, Kim, I'd like to know, you gave some examples of what it would take to fix the hole now and then just offer suggesting, you and I talked about this, you and I and the mayor talked about this, Kim, is in our, in our utilities to keep from having the big holes. Due to wage inflation every year, we have labor cost adjustment factors on our utilities. We don't have labor cost adjustment factor on sanitation. And if you do that, you don't have to come back every two years and say, hey, we're behind because that's going to be one of your biggest costs and you can keep up with the labor. And I've always said, your, your biggest fear of that is government abusing that and having more people than they need because you could just keep tacking on a labor cost adjustment factor. But if you're judicious with that, that, you don't get so far behind. You may fall behind if tipping fees go up, cost of cans go up, cost of fuel goes up, cost of equipment. But at least your labor cost will be kept in check every year and you won't, you won't have big deficits.
Yeah, and that goes hand in hand with inflation, so it's just basic business, I believe. I think it's a great idea to do that as we continue to move forward, you know, because we're, we're extrapolating here.
I say we fix the hole and put an LCA on it.
Y'all want us to bring that back to you, that sounds good.
Me, I'm one person, I'd like to see.
Yeah, we, we got to have the labor cost adjustments, that's what I was just saying. So that's why their numbers are up because they're, they're factoring in their labor cost. So, and I don't think we're doing that, we have these flat fees that we're doing.
And George will tell you that I will look, we'll look at some expense and I'll say, I think that was coded wrong. That is not sanitation, that has to, you know, so we're making sure what's going in sanitation, the cost you're seeing in sanitation is sanitation. And so.
So what we're seeing is correct?
That is correct, what we see is sanitation. And George would tell you that I'll say, hey, I don't, I'm not too sure about this, what is this? And because I want to make sure when y'all are looking at sanitation, this is truly cost of what it costs to run that landfill and run those trucks, pick up trash.
Yeah, 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 all right, yeah. Really push people to recycle, man. It's a, it's a big deal.
Because if you think about, it'd be your tipping fees from, from the trash would reduce if you have that garbage reduced.
That's right.
So that's another cost to reduce.
That's right.
Next, y'all have a bill sheet. These are some proposed capital improvements, new capital improvements, I was struck related. We have, you know, several rollovers for this year that think projects haven't gotten done. But these were just some proposed projects. Y'all have seen these lists on the meetings that we've already had. There may be some that has been, you know, removed, but we can just start going through these. In the Capital Projects Fund, we have, I don't know if you want me to go line by line, but we'll just talk about these. We have, we have several through here that's going to talk about shade structures. This is 65,000 for shade structure at the community kids park. 118,000 at the community kids park to resurface the, I guess, the turf or to make artificial turf. Improvements to the Magnolia Beach, 75,000. 137,500 for a, a park that is next to Jewans. We're calling that Fairhope Avenue Park, but it is next to Jewans. So 150,000 for White Avenue Landing Park. 200,000 for an intersection improvement with North Section and Valana Avenue. Our 500,000 for streets resurfaced projects for next year. 565,000 for pecan drainage improvements. And that project has been, we've been having those in phases. City are, right now, we're getting to the general, into general government. So this council chamber's in here, some phase two in your equipment improvements. For the police department would have some engineering for a new, engineering drawings for a new precinct. For the corrections center, a new fence. Fire department, there are several projects here for the fire department, but this is going to be to each one of their buildings. So I didn't want to, anyway, there's several there, so you can see those. Rec department, again, will have several projects here. And as Mayor would say, this is kind of the year of tidying up and completing some things. At the, you'll see right there, the first few, at the rec center, so the rec center, you know, $8,000 for some bathroom improvements, another 23,000 for some additional bathroom improvements. Running new fiber, so some examples. Then you'll see at some of the parks you have here, the youth baseball parks, some fencing, the football field, some irrigation, just a whole list. All kinds of stuff. Civic Center just has one item, some tile, ceiling tiles for 60,000. Museum, I think y'all have seen this before, is the $300,000 for some improvements at the museum. The marina, we combined some of this, but it's 395,000 to rebuild some of the docks. Streets department is for a roof for their recycle barn and office building. An art project that's going to be for the roundabouts. We have, we're creating a new department called Parks, and this is going to be a park that doesn't have recreation on them. And so we have Colony Nature Park on building some fence and some signage and a bridge. Let's go to the golf clubhouse. It's for shade structure for the pickleball, bathroom, and then for the golf grounds would be 250,000 dollars for some green renovation. Library, 225,000, and that is for the AC pump controls and a new unit. And the Boys and Girls Club, 100,000 for additional playground equipment. Sanit, for the sanitation department, it's going to be a canopy for, to store some equipment. 15,000 for a gate and 100,000 for fencing to go around the landfill. And so for these proposed projects, it's going to be for almost 4.3 million. And then I have on there what we spent, what we had budgeted last year for additional projects was 4,688. So that was real quick run through, but do you have any questions?
It'd be great if we could get a lot of these done, I know there's always some rollover.
I didn't see it on there, but we do have some press box for the football field somewhere. That's an idea, okay, all right.
Yes. Press box was a rollover, that's the reason you're not seeing it on there. So I just pulled out, these were just new projects. We still have rollover, press box does have like a shortage, I think it was like 50,000 from the rollover. But I just wanted y'all to see, these are brand new projects. That would be an additional.
Very good. So if we didn't get something completed this fiscal year, do we have the money still in reserves to pay for that? Because I know that these projects aren't getting done and so you want to budget and I'm going to roll over. Money rolling over too?
Yes.
Are we spending that on all these $300,000 expenditures we have come up every other day?
No, we, I mean, we're rolling those stuff over. So when a, so when a project comes over, we're looking at, oh, where, where can we move money from another project?
So when I see a budget deficit, it's going to be that because that money wasn't spent and that money was rolled over.
Yes, sir.
And so it won't, we won't have the income compared to our revenue projections. It will be the previous year's income that's paying for those.
That's exactly right. Y'all have any more questions?
No ma'am, thank you for all the work.
Council President, if I just may say, Kim and her staff have been doing a great job. Y'all been in some of the budget meetings, you know everything that they're trying to juggle to put this budget together and they're doing a great job and just want to thank them. And also the department heads, because they're doing a good job. I know you were just talking about, you know, unexplained, our expenses, unexpected expenses. Kim's done a great job of, and the leadership has, of making sure that if something needs to be done, that they're, you know, not doing a project or finding money in their budget somewhere and doing an adjustment to that. And Kim does a great job managing that and just appreciate them, you know, staying on task and really being physically responsible. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, we all do. Thank you, Ms. Kim.
Hey Cory, do you want to go into water now, just so that we make sure we don't run out of time before we get there?
Sure. Let's, where are we?
We're now in the committee update.
Committee update, yeah, so let's do it, yeah, yeah. That's, any, any committee updates? None, any committee, I don't have any either.
They start tomorrow.
Start tomorrow, that's what I thought, all right. So, so today, we're going to have, Daryl, if you, you come up and kind of talk about our water and what we have going on with our water, it's, we have an emergency situation and Daryl's going to talk about it.
Hi, good evening. So early, in the early hours of the morning, we had a well fail. Well number four down on Dairy Road. A shaft broke and it, it took the, the water plant down. So we have crews out there still trying to fix it. It's going to, it's going to take some time, but we're working diligently. We've got crews working overtime, we got crews doing everything they can to get this back up and running. It's kind of what I have to report, but details will, to follow as soon as we, we know something, we'll let you guys know.
Right, so at this time, we, this is, it's going to be an emergency situation, you're thinking?
Absolutely, 100%. Yeah, yes, we, we've lost over a million gallons a day with this well going down.
Yeah, with the well, so this is a functional thing?
Absolutely, 100%.
Okay, okay, all right, guys. So that's what we have on our plate tonight, guys. We got a situation, we have an emergency situation, our water has gone down, we've lost about a million gallons. And listening to the guys out front, the experts, you know, being able to push the water, keep the volume, we're going to have to ask the community to help us out tonight, I believe. We're going to have to ask everybody in Fairhope to help us out.
Yes, if everybody can do their part to help get us through this, this time, it's, it's going to be best for everybody.
Yeah, and I know it's something that no one wants to hear, even ourselves. I know it seems like we keep running into this, but it is what it is. We always want to do what's right for the public safety and welfare of our community. So in this situation, the best thing to do is to, to look into declaring an emergency where our water supply at this time.
Absolutely.
Yes.
What phase are we talking about going to? What's our usage been over the last seven out of 10 days?
Yes, so.
I realize that would be based on a lower capacity with the well shaft.
So we've been keeping up with the usage, Councilman Burrell, I mean, but, you know, we're, as we know, in all transparency, we, we've, we've been behind and we're working towards it and we have a plan in place to make sure that our community is taken care of as far as the water is concerned. So we're already on the line, so with losing this well.
What's the number, this is a black and white ordinance, what's the number?
What's the number been, what, the last seven days?
What do we add, what percentage of capacity are we at?
It's been close to 80 at least, but that's not, that's really, you know, but we, we haven't been in type of any, any real, real situations, you know, pressure wise. But with this water being missing, a million gallons being missing, that, that puts us in a pickle. Yeah, so, you know, I, I think, so what phase, to answer that question, let me call.
I think Joe Weber is going to also come up.
Yeah, Weber, ask Weber a couple of questions here. So Weber, Councilman Burrell is really wanting to know where we are as far as missing this million dollars. I mean, this million, this million gallons of water.
So pretty much, I mean, we're at peak capacity at the moment, you know. I understand we have this new treatment plant, new well. It helps, but losing this one does not, you know.
We lost a million, so we had 10 million gallons a day capacity, we're using 10 million?
We've been at nine.
We're showing eight to nine on here.
We were at 9.4 this morning and that was with the loss of the well.
All right, so you've got to do that seven out of 10 days.
So, and with that said, I think the more concern is the location of this treatment plant. It maintains the system pressure for the area it's in. So with it offline, we, we get our customers extremely, extremely low pressures. And obviously, you know, I'm sure y'all have heard, we've had a lot of dirty water today.
Do we need to alter the ordinance that includes a pressure component to that then?
So well, with the, with the well offline, you know, obviously the pump, two pumps, obviously, well pumps into the clear well, treats it, service pump sends it out. Without the well, service pump can't. Without the well, service pump can't run. System's designed to run off of that service pump, the pressure it provides. So heavy irrigation demands killing us, you know. Early morning times is the biggest time, you know, that four, five o'clock window in the mornings, you can see it on our systems when people start finding up irrigation systems to where we get a twenty, thirty PSI pressure swing, and that's killer, you know. I'm sure that, you know, customers don't appreciate as much as we don't, you know, but it's what we have to deal with now. Like you said, it is what it is, so we're asking for the help to maintain what we can maintain, you know. We are working diligently to, you know, get this online.
Yeah, Weber, so to answer the question, the phase is really, we really don't need people to irrigate at all, from what I understand, because it would then put us in a situation to where we wouldn't have any pressure at all, and we don't want that right now because of this fractured well that we just had. So phase three would be the answer, in my opinion, for that, with, with, you know...
I would strongly...
Just for a short period, and then phase back up to phase two, and one, and then back up until we give you guys enough time to handle the situation, and, and make sure that the water is what it's supposed to be and where it's supposed to be.
Yes, sir, exactly. So like I said, we're doing as fast as we can.
The reason I'm pushing that is, is that, you know, if we need to change the ordinance to include other circumstances, I mean, because if somebody's going to get fined for breaking the ordinance, because there are fines in here, they're going to go to court and say, your ordinance says this.
Right.
Yeah, and that's what I was following, and your numbers don't add up to that, so...
Well, I, obviously, there's been some changes with the new plant online, you know, we have more production capacity with that well. So this was, I won't call it the term outdated, we have to update it as well with the increase, you know, the improvements we have made. So, but there are things that are unforeseen, you know. We are looking at whether there's no chance of rain for ten days. So we're trying to be proactive as well as the need as it is now to where I can provide that water now, and two or three days, it's just going to get worse, you know. People are going to continue to irrigate more, you know, they want their grass to be green, I get it, but it's, you know...
Weber, so, let me, so, two different situations here. This is a structural issue right now. I mean, I understand that our system's under pressure, but we weren't, without this happening, we would have been fine, or, or we would have exactly followed the ordinance as is. This ordinance, how does that, Council, change, declaring an emergency, what Jack is talking about? Do we need to create a, a whole other, because it seems like two different things to me, even though they're married?
You can either change the ordinance, or, I mean, typically what we do in court, if something ever got that far, you take that into consideration, I mean, you really do. I mean, one, notice, did they get sufficient notice of it? Two, didn't meet the ordinance, then you know across the ticket, if they've got one. It's really, you know, nobody's going to make, I don't think, I hope not a federal case out of, but eventually you would like to have that ordinance amended. And I think you need to stick, they're telling us now that we are in that emergency situation, not by any fault of the way the ordinance is written, by a structural...
Yeah, I mean, because, because, you know, in order to follow the letter of this, you know, this was drafted under the assumption that everything was operating appropriately...
Everything was good, that's what I'm talking about.
And once we got up to a certain level, but, but under this, if you're following the letter of the law, God forbid, three pumps go down, we've got to sit here with no water for five days, seven days before we can do anything with this.
It's not going to work, two different...
And so we gotta, I'm, I'm, no, I'm, I'm with, I'm checking this, that we've got to have something that gives us...
You've got other mitigating circumstances could cause us to go immediately to phase three.
Yeah, I mean, we've got to, we've got to have an out to be able to justify this.
Even at ten million gallons of day capacity versus eleven...
It seems like a simple fix.
It doesn't, it doesn't meet the criteria.
Well, it seems like a simple fix, because this, we wouldn't go by this criteria, because there's a rate limiting variable that's not in our ordinance that we just added, okay?
Yeah, I think, so I think we got to include something that, that, that discusses, or at least gives the option, when there is a mechanical failure...
There you go, and just add that language.
Or declared emergency.
Well, we did, that's what I, that's what we're talking about, to declare an emergency today. I said that out of my mouth. So what is the difference, when you declare an emergency, do you now, these are my ignorant questions, do you now have to go by as if something is fluid or in utopic state?
No, emergency is emergency, all safety and welfare will trump everything. What I can do is question, but, or following the ordinance is concerned, you're declaring a separate emergency.
So that's why I declared it.
But you want to change the ordinance ultimately to where you can do this on a routine basis.
And not have to declare an emergency.
I think you answered it, yeah.
Yeah, now, but be, but be mindful, though, that the policy, the ordinance as written right now says, therefore, upon a declaration of an emergency by the governing body of the city, city of Fairhope, water conservation phases will be implemented on the following criteria. So this already contemplates the idea that we're going to be declaring an emergency, and then we have to justify that phase by the water usage. And so I, so I, I think it's got to be really more of a completely separate, not ordinance, but, but a separate declaration that it's got, it's not just a water emergency.
Right.
It is a mechanical emergency that limits usage.
Yeah, it's, we've got to add mechanical, we just need to add mechanical or structural in here.
And so therefore, we're taking ourselves out of the waiting for the capacity to reach certain levels on certain days. Because, under, under certain conditions, you simply cannot wait for that to happen, or it would be a catastrophe.
We can't meet that capacity now without this well, so the way to get to that point is...
Yeah, we got you, brother. I, I, we're a hundred percent listening, so...
And my only, my only concern, I want the city to follow the law.
I'm with you, I'm with you a hundred percent.
We need to follow our ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, it's...
And if we have to make up additional language to, to make it kosher to do it.
Well, I agree.
I agree. So, so Council, can we get an instrument that we can work with as far as declaring this emergency that you think would be okay? I mean...
Is he going to put it on, add it on the agenda for now?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
I've got a question.
Please. Sorry Cory, go ahead.
I understand that we've got a problem. My real question, everybody else's question is going to be, when is that problem going to be fixed? What is the ETA?
Yeah, so...
If that pump will be running, will we get it back online?
All right, we had, drilling company showed up today, pulled the old pump out, they took it back to our shop to, you know, investigate the damages and, you know, the timing that it's going to take to make the repairs, you know. Obviously, there's a couple of showers are broken, we don't know the reason behind it, you know, the pump has been in service for a while, and as y'all have seen, it gets used a good bit, so, but, you know, I don't have that per se at the moment. I'm waiting to hear back from them on the ETA of a new pump. I will tell you, in the past experiences, you know, you will look in at six to eight weeks. I've seen them rush it within two weeks. But we do have an option, you know, they have said that they have a pump that we can use temporarily. They are headed to Georgia to get it now for us. So our expectation is to have it here on site Wednesday, and hopefully pump it by Wednesday afternoon, Thursday. I don't believe the production's going to be the same, but obviously, anything we can get will be beneficial at this time. So it's one type of things that, you know, let's try to give this a week to get, because also, not only are we hurting, we got to play catch-up as well. This is not an overnight fix, you know, we are losing our towers as we speak, just because we can't meet the demand. So that's where we need the customers, and y'all to help us out on that. Now, obviously, if we can get this temporary pump in and go on by the end of the week, probably by the first or next week, we can sit down and reevaluate the situation and hopefully come up a phase, you know, and then hopefully by, I'd say the end of the week, I'll have an idea of what we're looking at timeframe for the permanent solution for this treatment plant.
So you're asking the public for a week, at least a week for the phase three, we'll come back, reassess, and then we'll see where we are going forward. The total process to get us back whole again is going to take possibly, at the extreme, the worst thought process, six weeks, eight weeks, you know?
You know, cross fingers, two weeks, so two to three weeks, but it all depends on, you know, we're in a world that everything's not available as it used to be, so, you know, it takes materials to build these things.
Yeah.
So it's just, you know, and the expense of it, you know, that's something else we have to address as it comes along.
And the question...
Spare pump put in your budget?
Yeah, so, well, the issue with these is, you know, each pump is designed for, you know, its purpose, so it's not like you pull one out of the ground and drop it in another hole. They're set to each plant.
So the question, the question that the public is going to ask us, or would like to know, are we mitigating these situations so we don't keep having, we got plans to move forward to, to be prepared for these situations, to fix those things moving forward, right?
Exactly, like I said, y'all, y'all have seen it, and, you know, you will see it also in the new next budget review, you know, we are, there's things that we're trying to get done, but, you know, like everything else, it does take time.
It takes time.
You know, so it's, we're being proactive by all means, but, you know, we're moving at the speed we're allowed to move in the world's time, so...
You mentioned two wells fourteen...
So, we, we do, you know, we have a treatment plant upgrade going on, it should start in October, you know, they're adding an additional well to that site, you know, also increase, you know, production as well. So, you know, our hope is for it to be online and in production by springtime, you know, that will significantly help us as well, you know, we are, you know, it's going out for bid, I don't know if the bid's been awarded yet, but, you know, we have four or five test sites that we will be drilling to try to find other water sources as well for the future, to where, you know, we just, we're playing catch-up, you know, we're close to being there, but we're not quite, you know, for the future, so, like I said, it's a lot of moving parts.
Right. But we have paid attention, and we are making the things to make it better, is the main thing. It's just we were behind, and now, here we are.
What is the industry standard for the usage of our pumps, the way they're used today? To be replaced as opposed to just wait till they break?
So it's...
Running through a two-week, three-week problem.
Now, it's ten to fifteen years, depending on usage, you know, we're coming into a time, you know, things have changed a little bit for us, you know, there was a time five years ago that you didn't see these pumps run twenty-four, seven, you know, so you got more than that ten to fifteen life range out of them. Well, I don't have a pump in the ground that don't run twenty-four, seven right now. So, you know, we have...
In the winter also?
In the winter also, you know, that was when we see a lot of, you know, what I call downtime, was, you know, you shut down a couple of plants because you didn't have the demand. I tell you, brother, that demand's there, you know, we, they run twenty-four, seven.
But you got to think about it, we don't really have a winter.
No, no, I'm just asking...
No, I know, I'm just saying, I'm just thinking out loud, we really don't really have a winter, so...
Irrigation is our biggest problem, we don't irrigate there often, but I'm not saying you don't have it, I mean...
Right.
My point's more in line of, if we've got a ten-year basis, we need to start working on, and look at what you're saying, you know, brother, we need to put it in something for every ten years.
Yeah.
And we do, we've implemented it.
On the rotational basis, all the pumps don't go down at one time when you replace it.
Exactly, like I said, it's, there's some changes...
If it's guaranteed, they're going to go down if you don't do something with it.
Exactly, there's, there's changes being made, like I said, the world we live in two years ago ain't the world we live in today, and ain't going to be the one we will be in two years from now, so we're planning for the future, and we're planning to where we don't have these inconveniences, not only for ourselves, for our systems. So it's, but it is, it's a work in progress.
So as we build, and I know every well's different, different depth, different pressures, different volumes, but are we trying to standardize any of that as we grow? Can, you know, even if you have to get a larger pump, I'm sure you could get a variable speed pump that might pump less, as long as it can do the max.
As, like I said...
We could use it at least on two or three wells.
This here, like I said, what they're providing us, we use vertical turbine, so, you know, it actually, you know, the motor, it pumps from below, from a motor on the top source. We're going with a submersible as this temporary pump, so this will be our first time running a submersible. So, and if this works well, I would definitely say we might try to implement to where we have one on hand, where we weren't to lose a well, we can pull that pump out and drop this submersible in and have it, but I'm not sure, you know, what maintenance that could be, obviously, you don't want to run this thing and then let it sit up for five, six years, and then go try to put it back in the ground. So it's one, they're available, like I said, we're getting one in two days. So I wouldn't say it's something I don't know we'll keep on hand, for the reason of...
Think about that.
Yes, but there...
Investigate.
There is a backup solution, and we are implementing that as we speak. Like I said, this company is, they, they got a truck headed to Georgia to go take this pump for us right now. So, just so we can try to get back on, hopefully by Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay. So Lisa, what we need to do here, we add it to what, twenty-nine, add it to the agenda, correct? That needs to be added to the agenda?
Yes, it does.
So it'd be what, twenty-nine?
Yes.
Yes, sir, twenty-nine, twenty-nine.
Can't be first?
Twenty-nine, yeah.
Chop chop.
Is it twenty, is it twenty-eight or twenty-nine?
It's twenty-nine.
That's what I thought, okay. So, Council, I, we need to, I don't have any problems with that, y'all have a problem with, I need to make a motion and a vote on this one?
Yes.
Okay. Could someone help me, please? Make the motion.
We have to wait the meeting.
We don't want to change it now before we get in?
We're not in a meeting.
Change it in the meeting.
We're in a meeting.
You can, well, you're not a council...
Okay, anyway, all right, guys, yeah, we, you could, you can vote in the work session, but anyway...
It's a discussion.
Yeah, yeah, you can't vote, but...
But I'm on board with that.
Okay, very good, very good. All right, so we'll do that. All right, so, anything else, guys?
As I said, I'll keep y'all...
Council, any other questions? That sucks, you know?
Well, there now, how was your weekend?
Yeah, it's been, it's been a long day.
It's pretty good, I don't know how much I can talk about it, but I got a seven-year-old, we drew a couple alligator tags, so we got us a couple alligators over the weekend, so he's, I got a happy little old seven-year-old at the house.
Good luck.
So, but...
Couple of deer, thank you.
Well, we, we probably should have, we got a couple good ones, so we don't complain too much. I got one in the ice chest, I got to take the taxidermist whenever I get a three-minute after-hours, now this is going on. So if anybody goes to Theodore, let me know, I'll give it to you to drop off for me.
All right. Very good, very good.
Thank y'all, anything else?
No, we're good.
Like I said, we'll, we'll keep y'all updated, obviously, and share you as well.
Yeah, thank you, Weber.
Thank y'all.
All right, brother. All right, guys, department head updates? We don't have much time, so keep that in mind, please. Department head updates? Anybody? I'll call you if you want me to. Wes?
Just a few housekeeping items, gen item number twenty-one and twenty-two pertain to the gas department. One of them's just a purchase of some pipe, the other one is the engineering for the creek crossings that we lumped into one group to...
What items are you, Wes, excuse me?
Twenty-one and twenty, uh, twenty and twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-one. And then the twenty-one is the engineering for getting the lines under the creek crossings that we lumped together into one, one project.
Yeah, okay. We had a good tab on that one, right? We had like three, I believe, for that twenty, is that right? It was more than one?
The bid submitted?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes. All right, thank you. Council, any questions? Love that. Thank you, Wes.
Council, I have item number twenty-four on the agenda, which is on-call for fire protection requirements to Gulf States Engineering. The reason I'm bringing that to you is, we have, each of you have served on the Planning Commission, you've seen some of the cases that have come through. One of the big questions that comes through regularly are fire protection requirements in relation to hydrants and, and what kind of things that we need capacity-wise, which is actually kind of appropriate to our conversation tonight. I ask, I'm requesting a not-to-accede, to be able to call them, as you know, the Planning Commission has very set submittal and response deadlines, and if for any reason we have any kind of project comes in that's in excess of $5,000, have to get on an agenda, come, speak to you, have you approve it, that could be up to a three-week period, so, I would add, we're asking for a not-to-accede, where if we have a situation and we have a timeframe that we need to call, uh, Mr. Wade over at Gulf States to come in and consult with us, that we have the, the freedom to do that. I'm usually pretty conservative on using consultants, so I won't use them unless we have to, but I'd like to have the flexibility to do that with some of the things we're seeing.
I guess that, that's in the budget, I guess, huh?
Yes, sir, I've got, I've got money in the consulting budget, so it's, it's within budget.
Very.
And it was a not-to-accede, I put a number in there, but, you know, I, I don't anticipate we're going to have any issue with it, hopefully I won't have to use him, but I'd like to have him if I, if we need to.
Tools. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm representing two agenda items, number 13 and 15. Just a little background on 13, um, Traffic Safety and Control Committee has had a, a lot of, uh, citizen interaction concerning Ingleside, as well as the discussion of where it intersects with Fairhope Avenue, and the Traffic Control Committee request to at least look into revisiting that intersection, and what are some of the options for, uh, reconfiguring it to try to make it more usable and, and safe and things of that nature, and this is just requesting permission for us to come back with a proposal from Neil Schaefer, kind of already know it's not, not a real big dollar amount, but it'll give us, uh, the, the update, the study that was done back 12 years ago there, as well as present to y'all some options of what could be if we wanted to look at that. And then item number 15, um, is awarding the bid for the John Martin Nature Center. Uh, I will tell you that, uh, we were really excited, because I think we had about eight qualified bidders at the pre-bid, but we only ended up with three bids. Two were very, very close, uh, one was out there, and, uh, you know, after meeting, uh, with, uh, all the folks that are stakeholders in this, and, and you see that Rebecca Bryant, who apologized for not being here, but her son is, moved her son to a university in Maine this weekend, right, or this week, so she could not be here. But, you know, one of the challenges is a, a pretty large structure, about 5,000 square feet, that, uh, it seems simple, you say, well, we're, we're just remodeling it, but we're taking a residential facility and turned it into a commercial facility, uh, and I'd like to blame it all on Eric Cortinas, but that would not be fair, but the commercial sprinkling and all the things that had to do for occupancy use was, was a cost driver here. And after evaluating, you know, I think it's the opinion of, of our architect, and I think I agree, that I, I'm afraid if we went out without just really gutting the project, uh, and, and maybe not getting what we really need is a functional use, uh, we may could get that dollar lower, but if we just went out for another rebid, we may end up where we are today, or worse off, so, we are making a recommendation to award the bid with the additive alternate two, which is the enclosed porch, uh, the standing seam metal roof really looks pretty, and it's really a nice extra, but we just don't have it in the budget to have that extra, and, and, uh, the building will get a new roof, it'll just be a, an asphalt shingled roof that meets code, and we have a lot of buildings that we use every day that have an asphalt, uh, shingled roof on it, so that is our recommendation as well. And I think Kim has scrambled very hard to identify funds to make this happen, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
That's exciting, very good. All right.
I have two agenda items, I have, uh, 16, which is the citywide tree trimming for the canopy of the neighborhoods and the sidewalks. And I have agenda item number 19, which is 702 Cedar, the drainage project that's been on the books since Hurricane Sally.
That's insurance money?
It is, it is not insurance money. No, sir.
No, Ken, okay.
Um, it's a failed drainage pipe that runs in behind some residence, actually, one of the residents lost a, a shed in the actual sinkhole. Um, it affects drastically at least two homes, um, and really anybody that's downstream, if we don't fix it.
That's true.
Um, the only reason why we're bringing it, we have it budgeted, um, we, but we are, our quotes, when we get all the quotes back in, we were $5,000 over budget, or $5,000, $5,557 over budget.
And number, um, 16, that's a, we've, we've used this company before, correct?
Yes.
This is not new?
Well, it's, uh, it, the tree trimming contract is new.
It is new.
We do a lot of work with, uh, Chris Francis Tree Service.
We've been doing the tree trimming ourselves in the past?
Uh, we have attempted to try to do it ourselves, obviously, as you can tell, we don't do very well at keeping up with that.
Okay.
We have a lot of subdivisions that are, are right around the same age, and the trees are all about the same age, and it's too much for one truck to keep up with.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, George.
Thank you.
All right, I'm back, um, I've got number 18, and this is for the mayor to exit a contract for Dewberry Engineering Services for emergency contract for water and wastewater in case we need it.
Okay. All right. What's the other number?
That's it, I have just number 18.
Number 18? Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions, Weber?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have three on the agenda tonight, exciting for recreation. Um, professional engineering services for the feasibility study on the new property 13 and 32. I've seen this property listed at several different sizes, this says 116 acres, but correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's 114?
It says, yeah, it says 16, but it's 100, I knew it as 114.
Okay. Um, number 25, um, amending the rules and regulations to the Fairhope docks, this pertains to the, uh, installation of boat lifts. I appreciate the help of Councilman Martin and Councilman Burrell on this. Um, number 26 is professional architect services for additions and alterations to the Fairhope Stadium press box, that I believe you discussed a few minutes ago about it being in the budget.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it does have to be engineered, and it will have to be bid out.
Okay. All right, very good. Is that all, though?
That's it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Pat.
Oh, no, thanks. What, what number was your first?
It was number 14.
14. You're good, bud. All right, resolution to A.D.M., Mary, I guess, the 17, the A.D.M. one, that's simple, just putting ourselves in place to gain monies. Mm-hmm, yeah, all right, Nicole, sorry, I didn't see you, my love.
It's okay, I was trying to hide. Um, that one is just, that is our, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, that was the one point, I think, 1,4 million that we got, um, they just require us to have a specific resolution saying that there's an authoriz, an authorizing person, agent, that's the word I was thinking of.
Representative, representative is the word.
Yes, and that is a grant, it, if you read the language, um, it sounds like it is a loan, but that's just because.
No, it actually says loan.
It does, it does, because they do not have any other, um, forms that say grant.
Okay.
So, everything that they, that goes through them says loan, and we can just go ahead and cross that off, we did get the, um, notification from A.D.M. that we can cross out anywhere that it says loan and say grant, but.
Okay.
At this point, you know, we know it's, we know it's a grant.
I knew it was a grant, but it read loan, but I was.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was like, okay, very good, all right, thank you for that. Counsel, any questions about that? All right, 17, 11, 12.
Councilman Martin, if you'd like for me to, I can speak to, um, the Southern Light and Unity Fiber Gulf Co., there's four agenda items, um, that is basically a franchise agreement that we currently have with Unity Fiber and Southern Light, they're basically the same company, um, they, they both have assets, so we're doing two franchise agreements, um, one with Southern Light and one with Unity Fiber, um, these have both been, all been reviewed by Greg Fender, our telecom consultant, and he has recommended approval for both.
Very good.
And one's for fiber, one's for, um, one's for fiber and one's for, um.
Pole attachments.
Pole attachments, yes. And also, number 27, go ahead.
Hold on, Counsel, please. Yes, sir, have they paid their?
They have.
They've paid.
They have, they brought it with a check, yeah, they sure did. Um, also, number 27 is a resolution, um, just like everything else we were talking about in Fairhope, it feels like, um, you know, we continue to see growth in our events, growth in our recreation programs and everything else, we really need to take a pause when it comes to races and runs and rides, and all these people who are wanting to come to Fairhope and do these events, um, really, the events have outgrown us, so we're asking that you put something in place to take a pause on those, saying that we're not going to add any additional races, runs, parades, or anything right now, um, and also proposing that the parade permit fee increases to $5,000 per year for these events, beginning in October 1st of '25, to be able to give those organizations time to prepare for that and budget for it. Um, but again, it's just, obviously, anything the council does, y'all can undo, so if somebody were to come to you and you wanted to do it, you could do that, but this just gives staff time to kind of take a breath, look at our, look at our rules, as y'all know, we're, we're reviewing rules right now for the parks and the streets and everything else, and, um,